Jamie, I'll turn the audio on. There we go. Okay. So it's time to convene our meeting. Laura sends her apology. She couldn't make it this morning. She's not feeling well, so she asked me to do my best to fill in. She's done such a great job as chair. I doubt I can manage, but I'll do my best to at least keep us on the agenda and on top. I'm going to ask Jamie to display the agenda so we can see what's coming. Yeah, you would scroll down a little bit. There we go. Okay, so today's special meeting is to consider a report we're going to receive from Oregon State University. Talk about some other things, as you can see on this agenda. I'll try to keep us on time, but we've got a lot to get through. And Jamie, if you wouldn't mind displaying the equity definition slide. And Paul, in the meantime, if you see my note. In Zoom. Your notes.
My note in the chat.
There we go. Yep, okay. Very good. So for all those, first, I just want to read this definition. So we can keep it in mind, Oregon will have established a health system that creates health equity when all people can reach their full health potential and well being. And are not disadvantaged by race, ethnicity, language, disability, age, gender, gender, identity, sexual orientation, social class. Intersections among these communities or identities or other socially determined circumstances. Achieving health equity requires ongoing collaboration of all regions and sectors of the state, including tribal governments to address. First equitable distribution or redistribution of resources and power. And second, recognizing, reconciling, and rectifying historical and contemporary injustices. So let's try to keep that in mind in our deliberation, so we always have health equity as a part of our thinking. And now, Jamie, if you would switch back to the agenda, I'm going to ask. Members to put a CM in front of your name if you haven't already, so we can distinguish members from guests. And then let's introduce ourselves. I'll start. I'm Paul Gorman. I work for Oregon Health Science University as the Assistant Dean of Rural Medical Education, and I'm an internist. Elena, how about you?
Good morning. I'm Elena Shablaski. I issue her pronouns. I am a general dentist and dental director at a federally qualified health center in Southern Oregon.
Thank you. How about Daniel?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Daniel Ornelas. I do serve as a dental program manager at the Virginia Garcia Memorial Health Center. Thank you.
And how about Jeff Luck?
I think Troy Larkin.
Sure, Troy, go ahead. Yeah.
Good morning, Troy Larkin. I'm a registered nurse. I work for Providence as the system. Executive Director for Nursing Outcomes and Nursing Education within their nursing institute. Good to be here this morning.
Welcome, Troy. How about Kurt?
Morning, everybody. Kurt Stilp. I am the immediate past Chair of the Committee. And I'm the Program Director of the PA Program at George Fox University.
Good to see you again, Kurt Babes.
There you go. Get myself off mute. Good morning. I'm Babes Rajani. I'm the Associate Medical Director working for Pacific Source. Health Plans, Community Solutions. So I work with the Medicaid population of Marion and Polk Counties. Good morning.
Good morning. And how about Manu?
Hi, good morning, everyone. Manu Chadri. I serve as President of Capital Dental Care, which is a dental care organization. Across the state of Oregon and who only services the OHP Medicaid population. Also, I serve in the capacity as a member of HiTalk, co-chair of its HIA Work Group, and also a member of the metrics and scoring committee. Happy to be here. Thank you.
Welcome. And who else? Who's not introduced themselves that's a member?
I see Bob also here.
Oh, wow. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Bob Lieberman. I'm a licensed professional counselor. For 40 years, I ran a children's medical health agency that had a whole range of services up to psychiatric residential. And I currently have a training and consulting business based out of Grants Pass.
Good to see you, Bob. How about Aaron?
Good morning, everybody. Aaron Heinz, CEO at the All-Hog Tribal Health Center.
Good to see you. If that's all the members I can detect on my screen, if there's any other members, we should have you introduce yourselves.
I'm not a member. This is Brenda Johnson. I'll introduce myself. I service this committee's Oregon Health Policy Board, please. I also have a role as the executive of La Clinica in Southern Oregon Health Center. It's great to be here.
Good to see you, Brenda. Okay. Go ahead.
Maria Lynn Kessler from Oregon Institute of Technology, and I'm a member for like, what, another hour and a half, I think.
Yes, we're going to miss you, Maria Lynn. Sorry, I missed you in the list.
And I'm Judy Geiger. I'm a new member starting next year. And I'm a nurse, and I'm the Vice President of Patient Care Services at Columbia Memorial in Astoria.
I don't find your name. I'm trying to scroll to it. Thank you. Okay, any other members, since I'm missing so many?
I see Dr. Hemmings is also here as an incoming member.
Morning, everyone.
Oh, and Ian Strauss is also joined. Maybe.
Okay, well, in that case, let's move ahead on the agenda. Welcome, everyone. I think the next step is for us to have public comment. So. Jamie, if you wouldn't mind putting the, stopping sharing your screen so we can see one another. Great. And if there's someone who, if I'm missing someone, wants to come in, please put it in the chat so I can. Be aware of that.
And Paul, let us know that nobody has requested in advance to offer public comment today.
Okay, okay. Well, then, if there is no public comment, we can move ahead with our agenda. The next thing on our agenda and the main thing we want to talk about today. Is. The report from Oregon State University on workforce. This report is being brought to us by a group that I will introduce now, Tao Lee, who's Assistant Professor in Health Management and Policy. At in the College of Public Health and Human Service Sciences at Oregon State University. And his research focuses on economic evaluation methods to inform decisions about healthcare investments. Also Jeff Luck, Associate Professor of Health Management Policy at Oregon State University and Public Health and Human Sciences. Who focuses on performance of healthcare delivery systems, health insurance programs, and public health agencies. Also Veronica Irvin, I can't see if she's here, but also Associate Professor in the College of Public Health and Human Sciences at Celia Strickman. And Austin and Kenneth Austin, third endowed professor in public health. Her experience spans 15 years using a community engaged approach to implement and evaluate behavior change interventions. And Colin Peterson, Health Policy doctoral student in the College of Public Health and Human Sciences. I'm going to turn things over to that group, I presume, Dr. Lee, so we can hear their presentation. About the report they're going to give, bring us on Oregon's healthcare workforce needs assessment. I want to preface that, though, by saying we'll try to have about 45 minutes to hear about the report. So that we'll have at least 15 minutes to digest and talk about it, if that works for everyone. So, Dr. Lee, are you gonna?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you all.
Okay. Good morning. So let's go ahead with hearing about your report.
Thank you. Jamie, would you please share our slide? Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone, for having us today to present our report of Oregon's Healthcare Workforce Needs Assessment 2023. Our team at Oregon State University collaborate and work closely with Mark Eilman Craig, the Project Advisory Group. The Workforce Committee and the Content Meta Experts to develop this report. We greatly appreciate all your support. Thank you. Next slide, please. Oregon has long been working to transform its healthcare system to ensure that all people in Oregon can reach their full health potential and well being. Oregon's goal of eliminating health inequities requires the preparation, recruitment, and retention of a diverse workforce. In 2017, the Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 3261. The bill directed the Oregon Health Policy Board and the OHA to produce a biannual assessment of the healthcare workforce needed. To meet the needs of patients and communities in Oregon. The 2023 Healthcare Workforce Needs Assessment will be the fourth report published by OHA. Next slide, please. So in this report, we summarize existing data and report to be included in the updated needs assessment. We use Oregon Health Authorities' annotated outline to develop our report as listed here. The purpose of this report is to inform investments going forward. And also serve as a blueprint for the work to diversify and expand the healthcare workforce. We will appreciate your feedback and questions after our presentation. Now I will pass to Colin to report the investment section. Colin, please.
So next slide. So Oregon has made a concerted effort to expand existing investments and make new investments and programs that help expand the healthcare workforce. Since the last healthcare workforce needs assessment. Existing programs like the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program, which includes loan repayment, loan forgiveness, malpractice subsidies, and scholarship incentives. As well as other incentives that are a part of the Healthcare Provider Incentive Fund have received additional funding, as you can see in the table. I also included some highlights on the next slide for the Rural Medical Tax Credit and Healthy Workforce Training Opportunity Grant Program, the How-To Grant Program. Which are part of the Healthcare Provider Incentive Fund. The Behavioral Health Workforce Initiative, which was created over the past two years and is also part of the Healthcare Provider Incentive Fund, will be talked about in the Behavioral Health Section. These incentives continue to build healthcare workforce capacity in rural and underserved areas across a variety of provider types. And have only become more important with recent shortages that have been exacerbated by COVID-19 and will be highlighted by the rest of our team. Next slide. Investments have also been made outside the Healthcare Provider Incentive Fund. The OHSU 303030 Plan and Future Ready Oregon hope to increase education and training capacities for healthcare workers. While also increasing the diversity of the future healthcare workforce. Our recommendations regarding investment include continuing to work with the public workforce system and allied educational partners. To continue to invest in workforce training and continuing to fund financial incentives like those in the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program. And Healthcare Provider Incentive Fund. These remain important tools to addressing workforce shortages. It is also important to evaluate and monitor the effectiveness of current incentive programs. Measures like cost per placement year across different healthcare professions and retention effectiveness can help evaluate the effectiveness of incentive programs. And achieving their goals of addressing workforce needs and inequities in underserved communities. This is important to ensuring the best allocation of resources and how incentive design can be adjusted to improve future outcomes. Finally, investments must address other factors that affect recruitment and retention outside of workforce-related financial needs in rural areas. Things like housing costs and supply, economic opportunities for partners or spouses, and K through 12 education needs have been mentioned as recruitment barriers. While we have limited data specific to this area, this has been mentioned by content experts and in other meetings as important factors. And then I'll pass it back to Tao.
Next slide, please. Healthcare workforce burnout is a longstanding issue which has been accelerated by the COVID-19 pandemic. A range of social, cultural, and organizational factors can also contribute to healthcare workforce burnout. For example, healthcare workers are faced with stigma when seeking care for mental health concerns or substance use disorders. A national survey found that over 60% of physicians reported burnout in 2021 compared with only 38% in 2020. In Oregon, a primary care survey showed that as of November 2021, over 70% of Oregon respondents reported their mental stress in the practice at all time high compared to around 60% at national level. The study by Oregon Center for Nursing also found that 83% of nurses reported stress. Next slide, please. Healthcare worker burnout can have many negative consequences as listed here. A national study found that more than 30% of nurses who left their job reported burnout as a reason. Nurses also who worked more than 40 hours per week were more likely to report burnout as a reason they left their job. Study also estimated that the national cost for burnout-related turnover is 17 billion for physicians and 14 billion for nurses. Next slide, please. There were national and state-level investments and programs to improve workforce residency. Here we just list a few examples. In 2021, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services allocated 103 million to be spent over a three-year period. To reduce burnout and to promote mental health among the healthcare workforce. In Oregon, the Oregon Center for Nursing launched the RN Wellbeing Project in 2021 to aid workplaces in developing interventions that are necessary to improve nurses' mental and emotional well-being. The Oregon Wellness Program also provides wellness support for physicians, nurses, and other healthcare professionals. OHA is taking various steps to support behavioral health providers. More details are discussed in our report. Next slide, please. In October 2022, the National Academy of Medicine published a national plan for healthcare workforce well-being. The 2022 U.S. Surgeon General's advisory also called for collaboration for, from a variety of public and private stakeholders to tackle healthcare worker burnout. Recommendations include coordinate collective actions from public and private stakeholders to cultivate a health system that supports health workers. Increase healthcare workforce diversity and make workplaces more welcoming for diverse providers. Invest in efforts to reduce stigma and support health workers seeking mental health care. Sustain a positive work environment and culture and reduce workplace burdens. Invest in assessment and research to inform evidence-based strategies to optimize healthcare workforce well-being. Next slide, please. Oregon was one of the first states in the country to legislatively mandate reporting by healthcare professionals. OHA's Healthcare Workforce Reporting Program was created in 2009. It required OHA to collect healthcare workforce data during their license renewal process. As of January 2022, there were nearly 192,000 licensed healthcare professionals in this reporting program data set. Next slide, please. These data are used to understand Oregon's healthcare workforce and inform educational and workforce investments. For example, this table shows primary care providers' FTE change over years. Primary care physician FTE decreased in 2022 compared to 2020, as did naturopathic physicians. At the same time period, nurse practitioners and physician assistants increased. So overall, there's a 2% increase in primary care provider FTE from 2020 to 2022. Next slide, please. The impact of COVID-19 on reduced healthcare visits were greatest during the first month of the pandemic. By early April 2020, the number of outpatient visits nationally decreased by more than half. Data from the Larry Green Center Primary Care Survey show that in April 2020, about 90% of respondents in Oregon. Reported high or severe impact of COVID-19 on their practice. And almost all respondents indicate that their practice experienced a decline in patient volume. Data on hospitalizations in Oregon also shows sharp reductions in April 2020. Hospital inpatient discharges were down 34% in April 2020 compared with January 2020. Next slide, please. The COVID-19 pandemic has had direct impacts on the healthcare workforce. According to OHA's COVID-19 report, there have been about 9,500 reported cases of COVID-19 among healthcare workers in 2020. The impact of COVID-19 on reduction, on reduced healthcare employment were greatest during the first month of pandemic. The pandemic exacerbated healthcare workforce burnout to an alarming level. The reductions in healthcare visits and revenues also led to layoffs. States took a variety of actions to address healthcare workforce needs. Healthcare facilities also greatly increased their use of temporary staffing agencies, and the cost for temporary staff increased dramatically. The public health workforce was increased during the COVID-19 pandemic, and many of their current employees were redirected to focus on the pandemic. Nationally, nearly three in four public health employees participated in the response to COVID-19 in some way. In Oregon, between March 2020 and August 2021, FTE of local public health authority workforce increased. 67% for the COVID-19 response. Next slide, please. Current employment estimates from the Oregon Employment Department show a rapid reversal of pandemic recession job losses. Employment in ambulatory healthcare had bigger declines in spring 2020, but also has had a stronger growth since then. The number of people employed in ambulatory healthcare declined 17% from February to April 2020. But had rebounded to pre-pandemic levels by August. There was lower but steadier declines in employment by hospital and nursing and residential care facilities. As of August 2022, the number of people employed in these two sectors was still about 5% lower than pre-pandemic levels. Next slide, please. This figure shows the number of monthly online healthcare job postings. In May 2020, the number of monthly postings was about one-third lower than pre-pandemic levels. And the number of job postings began to rebound by July 2020. There were about 17,000 online healthcare job postings in September 2022, which is about 9% higher than September 2021. Next slide, please. In summary, the COVID-19 pandemic continues to impact healthcare system and healthcare workforce. A recent report by Oregon Employment Department showed difficulty filling healthcare jobs. As healthcare occupations represented nearly 10% of job vacancies in Oregon. Education beyond high school is required for 53% of difficult-to-fuel positions and for 92% of non-difficult-to-fuel positions. Policies should expand education and clinical training opportunities to support workforce development. Our recommendations are to ensure adequate number of faculty and clinical training placements for nurses and other licensed professionals. Establish and fund clear career pathways. Invest in a mix of reliable and new strategies to enhance training opportunities. Next slide, please. So I will pass to Jeff to report telehealth section. Jeff, please.
Oh, thanks, Tao. So telehealth is one important way to increase access to a limited healthcare workforce. And at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, telehealth use jumped dramatically from almost nothing. To an average of about 1 in 10 Oregon health plan claims over the past two years. Next slide, please. About 60% of those OHB claims, of those telehealth claims were for behavioral health services and about 25% were for primary care. Concerns have been raised, though, about potential disparities in access to telehealth. But the data from OHBs show that telehealth use was fairly even across major racial, ethnic groups in Oregon over the most recent state fiscal year. Next slide, please. However. Telehealth use is significantly lower for rural OHP members and especially members in frontier areas compared to OHP members in urban areas. Next slide, please. One of the reasons that telehealth use jumped so rapidly early in the pandemic is that Medicare and Medicaid and then private insurers loosened their restrictions on reimbursing providers for telehealth visits. Oregon has made those new regulations permanent, but the Medicare regulations may tighten up again in 2023 when the COVID public health emergency is declared to be over. I'll highlight just a couple of important policy recommendations with regard to number, with regard to telehealth. First, collecting comprehensive real D data to understand potential disparities in telehealth use. And second, improving telehealth access for Oregonians in rural and frontier areas. Next slide, please. So with regard to Oregon's nursing workforce, our team drew largely on the excellent work done by the Oregon Center for Nursing and UCSF. And so this slide is one that is dated that this committee has already seen. That describes the number of nurses in Oregon licensed and practicing at different levels of training. Next slide, please. And then this slide describes the distribution of nurses across different practice settings. In hospitals, outpatient care, long-term care. So the, the UCSF OCN report had a couple of important findings. One is that Oregon increasingly depends on nurses from other states to maintain and grow its healthcare workforce. And then the next slide. The geographic distribution of nurses in Oregon does not match the needs of the population, especially in many of the state's rural areas. And then COVID's incredibly heavy demands on nurses led to the actual shortages that we're experiencing today. Next slide. So the OCN, the UCSF OCN report made very detailed and comprehensive policy recommendations. I'll highlight just a couple. First of all, to support Oregon employers to make healthier work environments to retain nurses in the profession. And second, to strengthen Oregon's nurse training pipeline at all stages, that colleges and universities, clinical placements, and apprenticeships. And again, please refer to the UCSF report for much more detail on these recommendations. Next slide, please. And then finally, Oregon's need for a workforce to serve patients in their homes and in long-term care facilities. Will continue to grow rapidly by almost a third over the next eight years as the state's population ages. Long-term care workers in Oregon, similar nationwide, are usually women. They're often persons of color or immigrants, and they usually have low incomes. Next slide, please. And these long-term care workers have long faced several major challenges: low pay, high turnover, and limited opportunities for advancement. And then the, as Tao showed in some of his slides, COVID absolutely slammed the long-term care sector. Worker shortages quickly became severe, and they remain so in Oregon and other states. And shortage, staffing shortages at long-term care facilities are leading to backups in admissions and discharges at Oregon hospitals. So OHA and DHS have taken several short-term steps to deal with these challenges, including increased reimbursement to facilities. And the nurse crisis team that supplies critical staff to some facilities. Next slide, please. DHS also recently commissioned PHI. To report on the state of the direct care workforce and long-term care and make several recommendations. And those recommendations focused on increasing compensation. On strengthening training programs and career pathways for long-term care workers and also improving their work environments. So thank you, and I will pass it to Dr. Irvin.
Good morning. Next slide, please. Great. I'll be talking about traditional health workers in Oregon. And Oregon has six specialty types of traditional health workers, and you'll see here on this slide. And the most recent one was tribal traditional health workers, which were added in 2022. As of October of this year, there are 4,000 traditional health workers that are certified and on the Oregon Registry. And next slide, please. A recent survey among A recent survey among traditional health workers here in the state revealed that they are still underpaid. They are underrepresented in certain regions of the state and underrepresented in persons of color relative to Oregon's population. OHA requires contracted coordinated care organizations to develop annual traditional health worker integration and utilization plans, these strategies to help integrate traditional health workers into the delivery of services, communicating with members and providers about benefits, and helping with evaluation. There is some current workforce development going on. OHA Traditional Health Worker Program recently launched a toolkit to help integrate traditional health workers into the workforce. There's also been a funding from Oregon Office of Rural Health to coordinate a CDC-funded grant to help support the capacity of CH workers in Oregon rural health agencies and hospitals. Next slide, please. There's also been some new funding that's not on this slide. Ocean received nearly $3 million to help workforce development to support community health workers. And there was also some recent funding from Oregon's Coalition of Local Health Officials to also support community health worker training. And I'd just like to highlight a couple of recommendations here, and that is, of course, increased compensation and reaching out to other areas of the state. Next slide, please. So I am going now go to healthcare interpreters in Oregon. And healthcare interpreters are bilingual individuals who help people in their communities who have limited English proficiency. They can also be persons who help communicate in sign language. Right now in Oregon, there are 1,200 qualified and certified interpreters on the Oregon registry. So in addition to the requirements to provide interpretation services as part of the nondiscrimination provisions of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the Oregon Legislature had passed House Bill 2359 to mandate that healthcare providers who are reimbursed with public funds work with a qualified or certified healthcare interpreter. And this law went into effect this year, July 2022. And again, there are about 1,200 currently qualified and certified interpreters on the registry. A recent survey revealed that in Oregon that there is about 30 different languages spoken by our healthcare interpreters, Spanish being the most frequently, and about 11% completed the registry of interpreters for the deaf. Next slide, please. There's been several actions that OHA has done to increase this workforce development, specifically around the certification process, removing application fees and really streamlining the application process to increase the number of registered healthcare interpreters on the registry. Healthcare interpreters are also required as part of a metric on the healthcare interpreter as a CCO incentive metric. And you see in 2021, all but one of the CCOs met this measure. Next slide, please. Just to highlight a few items for the healthcare interpreter workforce, really increasing policy options to alter some of the way that compensation is covered. So again, paying for it to our minimum, paying for patient no-shows. Again, increasing training for certified and qualified interpreters, especially across rural communities, and offering technical support to help integrate them into the workforce. Next slide, please. Now I'll be discussing oral health providers in Oregon. There are five different types of providers in Oregon: dentists, dental therapists, expanded practice dental hygienists, dental hygienists, and dental assistants. As of this year, there were 2,400 licensed dentists and about 260 licensed expanded practice dental hygienists. And there is still limited access to dental care in certain areas of the state, especially rural and frontier. Next slide, please. OHA has actually started several areas to address these workforce shortages. There is a dental pilot program which encourages novel practices, and a recent one helped to train dental hygienists to become dentists through a unique one-year program. There are several loan forgiveness and loan repayment programs for oral health providers working with certain populations or in certain communities. This year, OHA received a workforce grant and to focus on certain counties that are in need, Josephine, Jackson Lane, and Douglas. In these areas, they worked on expanding teledentistry. They also partnered with Mini Mobile Band to offer preventative services and also exams, x-rays, and charting. They have also partnered with OHSU School of Dental Public Health to expand the dental. Next slide, please. As you'll see, there's several recommendations for the oral health providers in Oregon, really expanding the pathways, both through student engagement, both ways to grow in the dental therapist, recruiting more diverse professionals into the field, and really making sure to reach other areas in the state through mobile dentistry, teledentistry as well. Next slide, please. My last section that I'll be covering is the public health workforce in Oregon. Oregon has a decentralized public health system. It's really broken up into Oregon Health Authority of State, the local health departments, local public health authorities. There are also travel health programs as well as community-based organizations. And they can also fund, OHA funds directly some of these, and LPHs can also directly fund CBOs as well. And there's about 1,000 workers at OHA Public Health Division. There's approximately 33 local public health authorities. And for community-based organizations, just a recent number, 170 were funded as part of the recent COVID-19 response funded by OHA. Next slide, please. As Tao had mentioned, there was an increase in the workforce in public health during COVID, as expected. There's also been some identification of some challenges to recruit and maintain public health workforce, especially in rural counties, especially in diverse staff. We also see that epidemiologists are a shortage across certain counties, especially in rural areas. So there's been some strategies to increase this shortage, including incentivizing staff, sharing staff across some of the smaller or more rural counties, such as sharing an epidemiologist across multiple counties, and contracting out for services. This last year or two year in COVID, the state contracted out with multiple universities in the state to have students help with some of the COVID contracts. There's also been some recent infrastructure funding. So public health has been underfunded even before the pandemic. But in 2017, the Oregon Legislature has begun to invest in public health with an initial $5 million investment to modernize public health. The last Biennium, this increased an additional $45 million. OHA Public Health Division also received a funding, or applied for a funding, pardon me, from the CDC to increase the public health workforce development and infrastructure. Next slide, please. And just a few key recommendations for the public health workforce. Again, really trying to reach or maintain the workforce, maintain the workforce, and increase in some of the rural counties, increase the diversity of the public health workforce. And some ideas have been to increase the workforce of homegrown professionals in some of these communities through education opportunities as well as increasing salary adjustments and different barriers for maintaining staff, increasing workforce policies, job rotations, and facilitating time off. And I will stop there and pass it over to Tao.
Thank you, Veronica. Next slide, please. Primary care providers not only care for patients, but also perform health promotions, assist prevention, health maintenance, and patient education. Primary care providers play a critical role during national health emergencies like the COVID-19. Studies show that residents in communities with greater primary care access have better COVID-19-related outcomes, such as less likely to get infected or die from COVID-19. The COVID-19 pandemic has also highlighted the longstanding problems like underinvestment and workforce shortage in primary care. Primary care is responsible for 50% of all medical visits each year, but only receive less than 7% of national health expenditures. Next slide, please. The 2022 Licensed Healthcare Workforce Supply Report by OHA estimated that there were 8,900 primary care providers actively practicing in Oregon, the majority of which were physicians. The statewide ratio was 16.2 FTE per 10,000 Oregonians. The county ratios vary widely from 6.1 to about 31 FTE per 10,000 Oregonians. Next slide, please. In 2009, Oregon Legislature created the Patient-Centered Primary Care Home or PC-PCH Program as part of a comprehensive statewide strategy for health system transformation. This model for care fosters strong relationship with patients and their families to better care for the whole person. The PC-PCH program works with partners across Oregon to set the standards for high-quality patient-centered primary care. There are over 600 primary care practices in Oregon that participate in the PC-PCH program, and more than 3 million people living in Oregon now receive care at a primary care, patient-centered primary care home. The 2020 PC-PCH program standards improve revisions emphasizing health equities. The PC-PCH program convened the standard advisory committee starting in August 2023 to advise OHA on the program's standards and implementation to further guide primary care transformation. Next slide, please. High-quality primary care is the foundation of a high-functioning healthcare system. To achieve high-quality primary care and rebuild a strong foundation for the US healthcare system, the 2021 report by the National Academy of Science, Engineering, and Medicine recommended five implementation objectives, including pay for primary care teams to care for people, not doctors, to deliver services, ensure that high-quality primary care is available to every individual and family in every community, train primary care teams where people live and work, design information technology that serves the patient, family, and interprofessional care team, and ensure that high-quality primary care is implemented. Oregon should also improve PC-PCH to emphasize health equity and support a primary care system that addresses community identified need, especially systemic racism, barriers to accessing care, and health inequity. Next slide, please. So behavioral health services are an important component of the whole person care and are provided by a variety of practitioners. The behavioral health system has been faced with a workforce crisis. Studies found that over 60% of Oregon healthcare providers reported their organization need more behavioral health providers. A 2021 national survey conducted by the National Council for Mental Well-being also found that 78% of its members have seen an increase in demand for behavioral health services, and 97% reported difficulties recruiting and retaining employees. Next slide, please. The 2022 Licensed Healthcare Workforce Supply Report show behavioral health professionals were the largest specialty group with 13,900 licensees actively practicing. Around 65% of behavioral health professionals were counselors and therapists and licensed clinical social workers. Next slide, please. There are several national and state efforts to address behavioral health workforce shortage. Here we summarize a few examples. In Oregon, the legislature allocates more than $1.35 billion in funding for 2021 to 2023 to transform Oregon's behavioral health system. Created through House Bill 2949 and subsequently House Bill 4071, the behavioral health workforce initiatives seek to provide incentives to increase the recruitment and retention of providers in the behavioral healthcare workforce with a focus on equity and priority populations. Next slide, please. House Bill 4004 aims to promote staff compensation and workforce recruitment and retention. The legislation provides $132 million grant fund investment for OHA to distribute grants to behavioral health providers to increase compensation to staff and pay hiring and retention bonus. Grants to agencies were awarded in May of 2022. House Bill 5202 included a recommendation of $42 million in state general fund with intent to increase behavioral health reimbursement rate by an average of 30% contingent on the CMS approval. The $42 million in state general fund are anticipated to have approximately $154 million total fund impact after the federal Medicaid match. Some highlighted recommendations include increased wages, reduce administrative burden, increase recruitment and retention of providers with a focus on equity to address the behavioral health workforce shortage. Next slide, please. So in addition to the recommendations for each specific provider type section, we provide general recommendations to support overall workforce development, including improve the diversity of healthcare providers, improve the supply and distribution of the healthcare workforce, enhance the resiliency and well-being of the healthcare workforce, expand chaining, education, and career pathways for many segments of the healthcare workforce, expand use of care delivery models, increase healthcare system use of community-based healthcare providers, and improve data collections to promote evidence-inform strategy and diversify the healthcare workforce. Next slide, please. Workforce shortage and lack of diversity in many areas of healthcare are a national problem experienced in Oregon. So the impact of the workforce investment has been significant, but there is more to be done. Additional resources are needed to mitigate workforce shortages and mail distributions and bolster culturally-specific representation as outlined in the recommendations in the previous slide. In order to meet OHA's 10-year strategic goal of eliminating health inequities, it is essential to expand and diversify the healthcare workforce to ensure culturally responsive care for all. Next slide, please. So in summary, our findings is some workforce clearly need pay increases. Many have unclear career pathways, and all workforces need more work around resilience. Next slide, please. We would like to thank OHA, the Project Visory Group, Workforce Committee, and content experts for all their support to our work. Again, we work very closely with Mark Nienman-Krag on this report. We greatly appreciate all their support and help. Thank you again, and we appreciate all your comments and questions.
This is Paul. Jamie, would you go back to the group? Thank you very much. So I want to thank the team from Oregon State very much for the comprehensive report, and we're all amazed that you got through such a whirlwind tour in the time that you did. So thanks both for the report and for that excellent presentation. We have some time now for questions, comment, and discussion about this report, which I'm looking forward to. Committee members, what are we thinking?
Hi, this is Daniel. I have a quick question around resiliency. And you know, the statement in the last slide that refers to workforce needing more work around resiliency, does that mean that employers need to provide more either time or tools for the workforce to develop their resiliency skills?
Yes, we do believe that more workforce, workplace transformation, and some innovative interventions to address the workplace will be very important. And we also discuss some, you know, education and training opportunities will be very important to address workforce resilience, not just for one specific provider types, but for all healthcare workforce. That would be very important.
The workforce in general and healthcare.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Daniel.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. The next hand up is from Paveesh.
Yes, good morning, and thank you for the report. One is just a comment, really. One recurring theme was an equitable gap, you know, in the workforce, and it seemed to be pervasive through all the different professions. Is there a particular profession where it's worse than others that you noticed? And how, you know, were there any suggestions of how to reach out to certain communities? Or are solutions not part of the process here? It's just really looking at the trends.
Thank you for that question. So we do provide some more details of our recommendations and actionable items in the report. For example, we recommend to use the health equity framework to infuse equity into the workforce development policies and programs. And we also recommend to engage communities in their decision-makings around the nature of their healthcare workforce. Jeff, do you have any comments on, for example, the nursing workforce and long-term care to address the diversity in workforce? Or to Veronica Urban?
I guess one...
Yeah, Pavesh, I hadn't, I hadn't thought about your, your question about, you know, directly comparing diversity across different segments of the workforce. One thing that's striking about both long-term care and the nursing workforce is that the younger, more recently trained members of the workforce are more diverse than the older sections. So I think we're, you know, there's, we're clearly moving in the right direction. But I think, you know, providing opportunities for underrepresented groups and actually encouraging those groups to enter the professions are, are things that can be done to actually accelerate that process.
Thank you, Jeff. I would like to also provide another example. I think another example I can think of at this moment is the Behavioral Health Workforce Initiative, which particularly speak to work with the, to improve the behavioral, behavioral healthcare workforce with a focus on equity and priority population. So we have more detailed discussions on how the Behavioral Health Workforce Initiative can, you know, engage the community in the decision-making. So behavioral health is another example.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Pavesh, a follow-up?
No, no, no follow-up for me. Thank you.
I see Manu is next in line on my screen. Manu, your question?
Great, thank you, Paul. So I have a few comments or questions. First off, I want to say that this is a really, really very well done and very comprehensive. Really touched upon all the different facets and health disciplines. The, the kind of first question that I had is that at Capital Dental Care, we contract with about seven hundred dental providers throughout the state. And again, we only serve the Medicaid population. And across the board, what we've seen is a increase of time for members to receive preventive services care, which is largely performed by hygienists or expanded practice dental hygienists. And even nationwide, the American Dental Association had published an article a few months ago saying that there's been a eight percent decrease in the hygienist workforce with, with no interest of kind of coming back into the workforce. And even on the OHA website, you know, as we went, as I had gone through a few of the links that were provided on the report, even though there's been an increase of the physical health provider workforce since the beginning of the pandemic, there's actually been a decrease year over year of the, of the hygienist workforce. And so the reason why I'm kind of putting that out is first to highlight that this is a concern and a need. And then also I was wanting to kind of pick your brain as to what can, you know, what resources or incentives do you believe we can look at at growing this aspect of, of the dental provider workforce?
Thank you for your question. I will let Dr. Veronica Urban to respond to this question.
Yes, thank you so much for those notes. I have been taking notes to add some details to our report. But I agree about the decline in the dental hygienist. There, there have been some pilot programs to help increase that workforce and to shorten the amount of time. So I think one that was mentioned in the report was the pilot program to offer like a, to move from dental hygienist to dental therapist, but that would again reduce further the dental hygienist pool as they move up to other fields. And, but if you had suggestions for other types of workforce development around this, the hygienist in terms of either pilot programs, more trainings, I mean, there's limited number of schools that do trainings as well. It would be great to add some more suggestions that you might have, Manu, into this report. Or other resources you could refer me to, to what would be, what would be ways that you might suggest increasing the hygienist workforce?
Would you like me to share that right now? Or would you like me to follow up with you via email later?
You know what? I can follow up by email. That would be great.
Okay, great. Yeah, let's do that given the time that we have.
Great, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'll put my email address in the, in the chat later on.
Thank you.
The second question that I, you're welcome. The second question that I wanted to follow up on is there was a previous recommendation around workforce resilience. And I thought Daniel really brought it front and center as it's going to be largely an employer sponsored real Dylan's training programs and a lot of, you know, having been through dental school and the challenges that, that I had personally faced there, I really believe that if we can integrate that type of concept of resilience at the level of education within the, either the healthcare professional schools within the state of Oregon, I believe that will actually help set up anyone coming out into the healthcare workforce for success because they already have the tool to, to be resilient. I was wondering if you may have thought or considered that in your report.
Thank you very much. I think that's a great comment and a very, very good questions. That give me an opportunity to discuss more about this. Actually, in our report, I do include some, another example, like to how to integrate the resiliency training into the educational, into like the early stage of healthcare professional. Example, the passage of the Dr. Longner Brain Healthcare Provider Protection this year in 2022 established the grant and requires activities to support the mental and behavioral health of health workers. And that will also establish grants for training health professional students, resident and healthcare professionals to reduce the, to, to reduce the healthcare burnout and other mental health issues. So I think that's one example to address resiliency among healthcare workers at early stage. I don't know whether that is helpful to answer your question.
That is. Thank you for calling that out. And then I think I had one other comment to make. I think I had one other comment to make. Sorry. Sorry, Maria Lynn. The last comment is that, you know, during the pandemic, a lot of hospitals, actually all hospitals in the state of Oregon viewed hospital dentistry as an elective surgery. And the impact of that was that it essentially prevented children and people and other vulnerable populations who have, for example, intellectual developmental disabilities from receiving care where they normally had, which was in a hospital, hospital setting. And so, you know, with the pandemic kind of coming to a close, but now of course there's other things going on. There is, there exists now an anesthesiologist shortage in the state of Oregon. And I was wondering, it can either speak to that right now or maybe, maybe include in the report how we can look at addressing the short of, the, the short-term shortage of anesthesiologists because the same issue that, that dental experienced where there was an inability to perform hospital dentistry or is very challenged. That still continues to this day because of the continued shortages. And the ultimate reality is that a lot of hospital CEOs and other hospital administrators are making the decision of life and death situations, of mortality-related issues as opposed to treating dental disease. And so, you know, as we think of midterm and long-term, I think it would be really helpful as we think of how are we going to rebuild the, the, you know, that, that specific specialist to ensure equitable care across the board and then move towards prevention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks, Manu. The next in line is Maria Lynn. Maria Lynn, your question or comment?
So I always love to follow Manu because he always sets up so well with his questions, the, the things that I want to talk about as well. So I kind of had two comments or questions for you. One on sort of the heels of what Manu just said, which was about, you know, sort of those other professionals in the healthcare system that are not addressed in your report. So the allied health sort of folks that are there supporting our primary care, healthcare workers. And I'm wondering if you've looked at all at how that workforce in the status of that, you know, affects the ability of our healthcare system to provide the necessary services to individuals. So that's one part. And then the other part is related to education. So I think Manu brought up about how do we ensure that we have sort of that resiliency training built in to our systems and, and clearly that's going to be driven by a program accreditation that determines what are the, the sort of academic content of training at the, in the higher ed levels and also by licensing and certification boards that determine what, what credentials or what background a person needs in order to become a member of a profession. And so what are the, what are the recommendations that you, or what, what, I guess, what path do you see to being able to make changes in those arenas that will have a long-term effect on our healthcare system? And also I saw in the report, you have, you know, obviously we need to do things to make sure we have an education pipeline or a training pipeline for everyone. So we know in the higher ed, we hear all the time how the pipeline from K-12 into higher ed is now shrinking. So population changes are leading to fewer people who will be graduating from high school, who will then enter college for those training programs. And, and we also know historically, I mean, I, I can see even in, you know, the time I've been in Oregon, the resources available to institutions of higher ed who do the training shrink from state support every year. Rely more and more on individuals to provide for their own education. So how are we going to ensure that we have a well-trained workforce if we're not actually supporting higher ed? So incentive programs are great to get people to want to come in and stay in Oregon, but you also have to have support, a robust system of educating people. And I don't see that. So how can this report help us move forward in, in, I guess, those three areas?
Thank you very much for your questions and comments. And we, we agree with you. Actually, in our conclusions, we also, you know, agree that the legislature has, has made critical investments since the last annual assessment. However, we, we think there is, there was more to be done, especially to, to the training and, and the education pipeline. So maybe Colin, you can share a few examples about, you know, some incentive programs to train the future workforce. Example, our future of Oregon, something, yeah.
Yeah, one of the programs I mentioned, the OHSU thirty 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 plan specifically tries to expand education opportunities. There's also, yeah, the, the Future Ready Oregon is another one that's kind of focused on training workforce. And that's across a couple of different sectors, but healthcare is kind of one of those main ones. But yeah, that, that's definitely one of our recommendations is to kind of keep working with both the kind of public workforce pipeline and education partners and expanding those opportunities so that we have better training and education to expand the workforce.
Yeah, I think my concern is that these feel like piecemeal sort of attempts to address a problem that needs to be addressed in a more systemic way, like having adequate, I think you say that right, adequate resources through K through twelve and then through higher ed for training and, and how we can move that forward. And I see Mark's comment saying that perhaps this report will lead our legislators to make some decisions that are more sustainable, I guess. Right?
Thank you very much for your comment.
Oh, is that it? That Maria Lynn? Thank you. All right, our next question is from Alena.
Yeah, thanks. And I think this builds nicely on what Manu and Maria Lynn also said, just addressing the, the external factors. And you mentioned it briefly at the beginning of your presentation about childcare and, and spouse or partner economic opportunities and housing costs and all of these other things that affect whether people who are trained in Oregon decide to stay in Oregon or where in Oregon they decide to practice. So I didn't see anything else in the rest of the report about recommendations on that front. And I'm wondering if you could speak to that.
We, we talked a little bit about this topic yesterday after a meeting we had and kind of the challenges of capturing some of these sort of external factors that are definitely having an impact, but are, are tied to different things that aren't necessarily directly healthcare workforce related and how we tie those in. Where a lot of us were saying how we've talked to different content experts or we've heard in different meetings, these kinds of things get mentioned, but then having kind of hard data that connects directly to healthcare workforce in those kind of areas is, is difficult. And so we definitely have been trying to find ways to capture that complexity and work it in. It's definitely challenging though. I, maybe Dr. Lee can comment on more specific areas where we're, we have that. But it's been hard to capture it in like a very concrete and data form.
Thank you very much, Colin. And thank you, Alina, for your questions. Yes, we heard this comment a lot about, you know, there were, there were definitely different, you know, factors that will influence the healthcare workforce. For example, like the housing cost, the living cost and spouse, employment opportunity. We build this report, you know, based on, you know, existing data and reports. And just like Colin mentioned, we believe this socioeconomic influence will, will, is influencing, you know, the overall workforce, not just in the healthcare sectors. And we have been trying to discuss the influence of these socioeconomic factors in different sections, for example, in the public health sections, maybe Dr. Veronica Urban can talk a little bit about that. And also one recommendations, we, we will, after all this great feedback, we will add a recommendation in our report that we would recommend to improve data collection. So that if a future report of future studies can have like a stronger data infrastructures to help answer these questions, to analyze the impact of, you know, this housing cost and employment opportunities, how that would impact the workforce department. So that is one recommendation we will add into the report. So we appreciate that. So to improve the data collection that focus on healthcare workforce.
And I would.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll let Veronica speak and then I'll.
Just quickly, I would just say, we did see one, you know, there wasn't a lot of connection in, in some of our survey data or responses. But in the public health, specifically the local coalition of health organizations did ask, do some focus groups and interviews with hiring managers this last year or two and, and heard from some of those in public health that housing shortages and inability to get a house was a barrier for people accepting jobs or coming there. So that was, and we'll add that piece in just a line or two. But the idea about a lot of these organizations or healthcare workforces have some annual or biannual surveys and maybe adding a couple of pieces or questions with either the hiring manager or others on the team about what other supports like childcare, housing are, are barriers also.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I think the, just anecdotally, so this is not a data point, this is the story. But I've seen that and to Maria Lynn's point about it's not just the providers, but the folks that support the providers. And I've seen a greater impact in the, in the practice in the clinic where I work that the childcare and housing costs have had a great impact on our, our dental assistants and our receptionists. And of course, then that upstream affects our ability to deliver care. So in that data collection, that, that encouragement to collect data, I would encourage that that data be collected for not just the, the providers, but also for all of the support staff as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alena. The next up is Bob.
Thanks, thanks, Paul. Thanks for a great presentation. Just seems like what Dr. Fublaski has been talking about, there's social determinants of resiliency in a way. If we have these kinds of supports, it's going to promote resiliency. And I, I agree with the importance of education upstream about the importance of self-care and resiliency and those kinds of factors in the workplace. It was all very fast and looking at the report. I don't know if I saw anything about incentives to providers and organizations to create a culture that supports resilience. Because we can educate, we can educate the people coming into the workforce all we want. But if the culture of the organization they, they're, they're, they're working for doesn't support resiliency, they're, they're not going to stay, they're going to leave. I, I have a qualitative analysis of factors that, that, that influence whether staff are satisfied or dissatisfied with, with their work. So I'm wondering if there's anything in the report that I missed or something that could be just mentioned. It's very complicated. How do we give incentives to providers to create that kind of culture? Creating that kind of culture is not an easy thing to do. It's a, it's a complicated thing to do. But I'm wondering if there's, is something that can be included in there about helping providers and provider organizations create cultures that support resiliency. So Tao, can I speak to that briefly?
Yes, please.
So yeah, thank you very much for raising that. And if you have, if you have sort of a summary of some of those findings that we could mention in the report, if you could perhaps share that with Mark, we'd be really glad to. But the, the one place that, that came up or two places that came up is in.
But the the one place that that came up or two places that came up is in talking about improved workplace environments and long-term care and nursing, which includes things like team-based care, delegation of care to you know, professionals so that people are practicing at the top of their license. If if that's some of the things you're talking about, we could more explicitly connect the dots in our report.
And and thanks for that. I did notice team-based care and that that struck me at the time. Yes, that's that's something we need to be looking at. So maybe maybe emphasizing those. And I will send along a summary. This is a qualitative, not a quantitative analysis. So it's not hard data. It's 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 based on three hundred fifty interviews across many, many states. I forget how many states. So I'll send a summary of those job satisfiers and dissatisfiers to Mark.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yeah. And Jeff, if you don't mind, I would like to add one more example that we did mention in the resilience section. For example, like I also discussed in the presentation that the Oregon Center for Nursing launched a wellbeing project that is specifically to aid workplaces to developing interventions to improve nurses' mental and emotional wellbeing. This project is to compile resources to help nurses access care and build the resilience in the work in the workplaces. And also, I I also received another piece of information in you know, at our meeting with the the content actors, that there was another report just coming out at a national level to discuss the workplace wellbeing. We will also include that in the report.
There aren't any other hands up at the moment, so I want to add a comment slash question. That has to do with this discussion of resiliency and burnout as an individual level problem as opposed to a systems level problem. And I'll I'll forgive this story, but imagine a a car factory that requires an individual person to lift the engine block and put it in the car by themselves. You'd probably experience a lot of back and other muscular skeletal problems in that population. Now, one approach to that would be to send those people off for more back care and get them lots of help to take care of their back and teach them proper lifting technique. But the problem's probably better addressed by improving the job, giving them equipment and a team to put that that engine block in the car. And as we talk about resiliency as an individual problem, telling nurses and dental hygienists and everyone else to go do wellness, I think we're missing the possibility that looking at this from a systems level might produce better, more far-reaching solutions. Do you have any thoughts or comments or about that?
This is Veronica. I'll just add in, just from the public health, because they had some more data recently about that and ways to improve job satisfaction. So offering more job time off with backup support, so the idea that when you take time off right now, there's no backup support. So there's just somebody else coming back. So adding in more or more opportunities, more in ways to grow internally. So I think there were some suggestions from at least in the public health section about how they'd want to improve satisfaction in retaining the workforce. But I do agree with adding some of those pieces about how to change system levels as well. So thank you.
Thanks. I see Bhavesh has a hand up.
Yeah, Paul, I think it's just a really a follow-up and 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 my thoughts really go along the path of a lack of adequate, you know, providers has really created a lot of the burden. So thinking about, you know, in primary care, as soon as a provider leaves, that the patient population has gone, you know, and trying to manage the workforce, the the workforce to support the number of patients, you still need to think about managing all the healthcare needs for the population you're serving. And soon as one person leaves, the burden increases exponentially. So I think that the the underlying theme in terms of relieving the burden is not only around improving the resiliency of the individual, but the system needs to support that individual by recruiting in more more providers so you can reduce the the work burden that that exists. Because ultimately, people are burnt out by the amount of work they have to face every day and not being able to share that load.
And thanks, Bhagavati, and some others commented on this in the chat also.
The conversation reminds me, forgive me for adding my own comment again, but some work out of Belgium looking at something they're referring to as organizational dehumanization and how the production of burnout due to organizational dehumanization is accelerated by emotional exhaustion. And so especially we've seen that, I think, in COVID, where all the things that were leading to burnout before COVID then got accelerated amplified by the pandemic and the exhaustion that health professionals were experiencing. And we have time for another question or two, and this is great discussion. Well, if there's no more questions, I want to, first of all, we have a lot of, this is an excellent report, very thorough, and we appreciate the work. And it makes a lot of recommendations. And one of the challenges now is to figure out how to make sense of or prioritize those recommendations. I know the OHS staff have looked at this a bit. Mark, if you've got anything to add in terms of trying to make sense of or prioritize or whatever these recommendations?
Paul, I I don't really, for this setting, we we have taken a look at, for example, in in the full report itself, I think twenty six separate recommendations, they're kind of cut across professional areas and beginning to look at, are those short, medium, long-term recommendations in terms of their implementation? What's the the potential effort required to implement? What's the potential impact? Do they need legislative funding or policy, et cetera? We we began to look at that work, and that may be something instructive for the committee and other policymakers as it looks to like, okay, you've got twenty six or forty different recommendations. What's what's most helpful? And I know Brenda's very supportive and encouraging of that kind of analysis.
Okay, well, if I understand correctly, now the process is that now that we've considered the report, the authors will finalize it and it will go to the policy board for approval or final?
That that that's right, Paul. If I can, next Tuesday, the the OSU team will be presenting again to a special educational webinar sponsored by the board. And then at the January tenth meeting of the board, the board will review the final report along with hearing a presentation and then will be asked to approve the report and then have that transmitted to the legislature in January.
Thank you. So I wonder if there's support among our committee for the idea that we might add or insert or or send to the policy board so some sort of summary or addendum, any kind of input from this committee to add to that report? Because I I think if there's support for the idea, then I would ask the committee, perhaps someone could one could make a mention, but I think Laura and I would help maybe summarize comments or emphasis from this committee. Would that be helpful? I can't see everyone's faces, so I don't know what you all think.
Paul, I think that's a really great guidance, and I think it's exactly how the committee structure is is envisioned to work. You know, I'd especially appreciate your references around system resilience instead of like provider resilience or healthcare worker resilience. I think that was very well articulated, including your analogy. So I'm not sure if you'll be presenting with me in January, and if so, I'll encourage you to share that one.
Thanks. Maria Lynn, you had your hand up or did you change your mind? Okay.
I was I was trying to do the thumbs up. I hit the wrong button.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
This is Veronica from Oregon State, and I I'm emailing or texting or sending messages to some of the who provide a comment. So I like to follow up with maybe Manu and others that I might add some more of those details in they had mentioned into this report too. So around, especially around oral health.
Paul, I don't know the protocol, but were you looking for a motion to that effect, that we prepare a summary of of our thoughts and comments for presentation to the board? Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, I think that would be helpful to have a motion and then I Laura and I would take responsibility for creating a summary that that convey that we could then convey to the policy board. So a motion would be
I'll make a motion that 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 the committee prepare a summary of our thoughts and comments about this report today and have that ready for presentation to the Oregon Health Policy Board when it's convenient to discuss it.
Okay, so I have a second.
Second.
I would second.
Okay, any discussion of the motion? Alena, you're you're laughing. I actually bought and read a copy of Robert's Rules when I was two years back. So I know how to do this stuff. Anyway, there being no further discussion, are there? Let's take a vote. All those in favor, please give me a thumbs up. Other, okay, good. All those opposed, please give a thumbs up. And since I may not be able to see it, please convey that to me in some other way, email, chat. Good. Okay, in that case.
And then Paul, staff will take responsibility. We'll set up a session for you and Laura and then make the offer for any member who wants to contribute to that that development work.
Thanks, Mark, for that. In that case, the motion's passed and we will proceed with help from the OHS staff to get the things organized and just let me comment for a moment to make sure your voice is heard, please. I'll invite email from anyone to me so that I know what your comments and thoughts are and things that we ought to include in that in that summary. We got to move on, and I want to once again thank the Oregon State team for an excellent, comprehensive report and a brilliant job of summarizing it in such a short time. We all know how hard that is to do. With that, we're going to move on a little late in our agenda, but we have the how-to report on the agenda. Joe?
Yes, thank you. Thanks so much. I'm Joe Bergeron. I work in the primary care office with Mark and Neelam. And Mark had asked me just briefly today to share a couple of updates about the how-to program. I'm going to put the website of the how-to program here in the chat box. How-to stands for Healthy Oregon Workforce Training Opportunity. This is one of the workforce grant programs that was mentioned earlier today. I am assisting a little bit while we're searching for new staff in the program. I'm on the interview committee. We're hiring a new program coordinator. Joe Johnson was the previous coordinator and moved on to a new role at OHA. And so we're, that that process is underway and we're looking to have a new employee join the the team in January. On the how-to website, on the right side and at the bottom, you'll see a link to the how-to advisory committee which we're also searching for new members right now. I'll put that application also in the chat box. That's due a week from tomorrow. With attrition on that committee, we're looking to add about eight to eleven new members to increase the size of the committee to about fifteen or so. And that committee meets about just twice per year. It's a two-year commitment. And all the details are there on the link. We're going to be finalizing the review timeline to review applications after the fifteenth, just to assess the number of applications. Currently, I checked this morning, we have about fourteen applications. We may need to extend that application period to expand the application pool. But I'm working closely with Mark and Neelam on that planning. I'm going to be scheduling the reviewer orientation for sometime in January. I've started to assemble a review committee with the Behavior of Health Workforce Initiative and other OHA partners. And I would be interested in approximately, say, one to two reviewers to join the the review team from the Healthcare Workforce Committee. That would just be about a two-hour time commitment for later in January and early February. So let me put my information in the chat box here. If you are interested in serving on that review committee.
Thanks, Joe. And since we gave, we shortened your time so much, perhaps I could ask, is it possible, Mark or Jamie, for us to communicate to the committee this request for help from the how-to folks?
We'll we'll put that in the follow-up memo.
Very good. Thank you so much. Our plan is to present the slate of health how-to advisory committee members to the Healthcare Workforce Committee meeting on March eighth. And the advisory committee orientation would then be sometime in March as well.
All right. Thanks, Joe. So now moving ahead on our agenda, our last item is to, I have the honor of thanking folks who I've had the privilege of working with on this committee. All four people are leaving the committee now. Kurt Stulp, Troy Larkin, Maria Lynn Kessler, and Janice Maybe. Janice couldn't be here today, and I just personally want to say it's been a privilege to work with the folk, all of you, and participate in this hard work of this committee. I think Maria Lynn might be the longest-serving member of the committee. Is that right? And so I want to thank them for their work on the committee and and making the the work, making, being a part of the committee so rewarding for me personally, and I'm sure for many of the rest of us. Any parting comments?
Well, I just want to say it's been really, actually oddly fun to be on the committee. Guys do great work and it's just I've learned a lot by serving on the committee. And I don't know what I'm going to do with my every other month Wednesday morning time now. I'm sure I'll find something.
I'm sure you will.
It it's been a great honor to serve and I have appreciated the the work of the committee over the years and looking at where we are today. It's very, you know, this is is done on the backs of all of the committee members and and staff at OHA. I appreciate you all very much, Mark. Jamie, thank you so much. And I will, oddly enough, I will I will miss showing up every other week. So it it's been a great experience. I have, I too have learned a lot and and hope that I've contributed to the to the good work of this committee, knowing that it's in very good hands to to go forward. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Yeah, it's been quite an honor to serve. Thank you all. I appreciate all of the friendships and partnerships that have resulted over the last handful of years as a result of of this committee and and really want to thank Mark and the team at OHA for doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work in between committee meetings and Brenda, also the work of the Health Policy Board. Thank you so much for your advocacy for us and your representation for us on the Health Policy Board. It's been, it's been a lot of fun and I will miss seeing you all each month.
And we're going to miss all of you. The meetings won't be the same without you. So thanks again for your contributions. And with that, I think we're, this is the first time as a chair I've ever finished a meeting on time. Thanks, everyone, for for your participation and please communicate your thoughts about the report, one way or the other. Mark, a comment? You're on mute.
Thank you. For 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 incoming members and returning members, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Wednesday, January eleventh. We're anticipating an orientation for incoming members from eight to nine fifteen. All are welcome, however, to attend, in case you'd like a refresher. And then the business meeting will start at nine thirty as usual. There will be a special meeting on January the fourth to have the committee review the evaluation of healthcare provider incentives, much like today's session with the OSU team on the Healthcare Workforce Needs Assessment. We'll be getting all that out in email.
Thanks, Mark. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody. See you next time.